Okay, I'm getting ready to call. Our meeting to order in a moment, just reminding everyone, there's a meeting downstairs as well, Financial Review Town Hall that started at 7:00. Okay, making sure everyone's in the right place today. The Finance Review is downstairs. Okay.
Another meeting downstairs?
The Finance Town Hall is downstairs. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Calling the Planning Commission meeting to order, it's 7:01 PM with a roll call of Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Robinson.
Present.
Commissioner Nordmo. Commissioner Scusso.
Present.
Commissioner Hammond.
Present.
And Commissioner Hillman.
Present.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Nordmo.
I'll second.
All in agreeance, say aye.
Aye.
It's not a roll call like City Council. Okay, all right. Anyone against? Okay, motion carried. I would like to take an approval of the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with a change of moving item 7A, Officer Elections, to item...
Oh, 3A.
3A.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Motion carried. Next item here is the Officer Elections. And to talk about the Officer Elections briefly will be DDA Director Coulson and then Planning Commissioner Hammond will give a more in-depth explanation of the positions as well.
Thank you, Lisa. As we have, first of all, I want to welcome two new board members to with us tonight. We have Jerian Clark and Sharon Abraham. They are both very qualified and very excited to be here with us. So, thank you both for joining us and your interest for both being a part of the board and serving your community. We are in a very exciting time right now because we're about to kick off our master plan update that will begin next month. Next month, we'll have Giffords Webster here with us to facilitate the start of the process that will take roughly 12 to 18 months. So, it should be a fun, exciting process and will also give us an opportunity to engage with both residents and business owners and property owners in our DDA district across the community to learn what their top priorities are, seeing the city move forward. And we are going to be voting for new officers tonight. There are three positions by us in our bylaws. There'll be a Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. I'll give it to Jason to go a little more in depth.
Sure. So, according to the bylaws, the duties of the Chairman and Vice Chairman include the Chairman presiding at all meetings and hearings of the Planning Commission. If the Chairman is absent or unable to preside, then the Vice Chair presides over the meetings. And in the event that both of those positions are absent from a meeting, then we appoint a temporary Chairman to run any meeting where we have no Vice Chair or Chairman. Whoever is presiding over the meeting, their responsibilities during the meeting include presiding over, deciding all points of procedure or order. And they may at any time change the order of business at their discretion unless otherwise directed by a majority of members in the attendance on a motion duly made and passed. So, you know, we have some discretion amongst the members of the Commission on orders of procedure, but whoever is presiding over the meeting kind of gets the first take at it. Other than that, the Chair and Vice Chair have some managerial responsibilities, directing official business of the Commission. If there are forms that we have to sign or anything like that. If we have a need for legal advice or staff assistance, then it would be the Chair's responsibility to request those things. If the Planning Commission ever were to decide to appoint a committee to do some work on our behalf, it would be the Chairman who would appoint the committees. And the Chair is also responsible for reporting to the Commission on any transactions that have not otherwise come to the attention of the Commission. The Chairman shall also make or cause to be made any reports concerning the affairs the Commission required or requested by the City Administrator or requested by the City Council. So, essentially, they would be our point of contact for any actions that are being requested by the City Administrator or the City Council. The Secretary, according to the bylaws, is intended to be a recording officer, maintaining records for the Commission. In actuality, we lean on the clerk to do that for us in practice. So, the Secretary also, the bylaws do indicate that the staff can assist the Secretary in their duties. The Secretary can prepare, send out, and/or cause to be published any notices that are required. Secretary maintains the Commission records and minutes of meetings, maintains a list of all standing and special committees in existence, and generally performs or supervises all clerical work at the Commission. Again, this is done with the support of the clerk and other city staff. So, the Secretary is supposed to be involved in collaboration with the staff on defining the agendas for our meetings, maintaining official minutes, and maintaining a book for the Planning Commission Rules of Procedure, and submitting any recommendations to the city clerk. But again, we kind of lean on the staff to help us primarily with that. So, from an actual effort perspective, the Secretary position is kind of more ceremonial and supporting the Chair and Vice Chair. That's it.
Thank you, Jason. I think at this point, we can proceed to the next item and then get to seeing if anybody would like to volunteer, take on one of these roles, or if somebody has somebody in mind they'd like to recommend, or...
Sure. Even before that, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And make two quick points. First, also according to our bylaws, we are supposed to be electing officers in January of each year. So, for clarity, the officers we elect tonight, are we electing them through year end 2025 and then re-electing new officers come January 2026? Or is there some other type of schedule?
That would be my recommendation. I mean, there was an oversight at the beginning of this year that these positions weren't fulfilled. So, my recommendation was going to be to have the term run through the end of this year, and then January of next year, we'll get back on track.
I agree. I think that's the best approach, especially since this is our first meeting with less, not renewing his term with the Board.
I also like that approach because, of course, we have Commissioner Abraham and Commissioner Clark joining us for the first time tonight. And I don't mean to be presumptuous, but I don't know how enthusiastic you would be to preside over meetings you haven't even attended yet. Maybe you are, I could be wrong. But this kind of interim period might provide our newest members some good experience to perhaps have a more foundational understanding of whether or not the officer role is something they'd like to take on come January.
I agree. I think for the Chair and Vice Chair, I think for the Secretary role, it would be a good role to be able to help our city clerk in keeping records for the, and city staff for keeping records of the Commission's activities, but also engage you with the material more hands-on and give you more of a better understanding of exactly what it is that are our expectations here as Commission members, and also what is the responsibility of the Planning Commission as a body.
I said I have two points, but I think I only have one, or maybe I forgot the second one. And I don't think I'm brinky confidence when I say this, but I did speak with Commissioner Normo in advance of this meeting, and he did articulate to me that he's not interested in chairing the committee. So, if any of you were looking to nominate him, I would hate for him to come back into a role that he doesn't want. I didn't speak to him more specifically about vice-chairing the committee or serving a Secretary of the committee. Jason or Jim or somebody else may know more about his willingness to serve in those capacities, but he was pretty explicit with me that he would prefer not to have the obligation of running the meeting, rather just devote his time to contributing meaningfully to the discussion within the meeting, so.
I can't speak to Secretary, but I do believe the Chair and Vice Chair, he would not be interested in.
Those were my only points and questions. Thank you for clarifying.
Is there any member of the Commission who would like to volunteer for one of these three officer roles?
I will volunteer for the Chair role. Something I would like to do, for what it's worth, I attend virtually every City Council meeting. And so, in terms of rules of procedure, I feel like I would be pretty decent at it. And certainly, if I'm not come January, we could easily select somebody else more qualified to succeed me, but, or succeed me, rather. But for the interim, I'd be willing and feel capable of doing it.
I wouldn't mind being Vice Chair if nobody else...
Okay.
And I'm willing to take on the role of Secretary.
Wow. Usually with these boards and committees, it's really hard to get people to volunteer. Thank you so much for all three of you for stepping up, especially you, Jerian, for being in your first meeting, still willing to step up. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Hillman to the Chair office.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carried.
Can I make a motion to install Commissioner?
Scusso.
Scusso, I'm sorry.
Hannah.
Scusso as the Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carried.
Oh, I will make a motion to install Commissioner Clark as Secretary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Motion carried. Now, we will take a motion or discuss the approval of the minutes from August.
At this point, I think, I know the bylaws typically, the bylaws state that typically the officers won't take, assume their responsibilities and their role until the next regular meeting. But given the lack of Chair present and eliminating or leaving you from that responsibility, my recommendation is that Tim hit the ground running.
Sure. Well, first, before I seek a motion, have all members of the Commission received and were able to review our meeting minutes from the August meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and I'll take a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minute that's...
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't listed as absent or present in the minutes, so I'd like to be designated as something.
So, I'll make a motion to, you already made a motion, but we have a second on that motion to approve the minutes as written?
No.
You want to amend your motion to add the correction to list Commissioner Scusso as absent?
Yes, I'd like to amend my motion to include Commissioner Scusso.
As absent?
As absent.
I'll second that.
The item's been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, we can move on. Agenda item five, public comment. Remember, we will limit public comment to three minutes. It can be for items on the agenda or not. I will remind you that Agenda item 7B, public hearing, will provide you another opportunity to weigh in directly on the solar and battery storage system ordinance. So, feel free to use your public comment time for that, or feel free to reserve it for the public hearing.
Jonathan Tera?
I'm sorry, Jonathan, before you start, this is my first day.
Sure.
Two times.
I see.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to disrupt.
Sure. I'll have comments about batteries later.
Sure.
First, if I can be allowed a simple interactive question, have, has the Commission recommended and/or has the Council passed a resolution about, or, you know, code changes about money, money servicing businesses? Is that a done deal, or?
That's correct.
It is a done deal, but things can still always be changed.
Of course.
So, I just want to direct the Commission to a recent federal lawsuit filed about a week ago. You can look it up, and you'll find news articles, and you'll find a PDF of the lawsuit. District of Columbia versus Athena Bitcoin. Because I know there was some discussion about, well, do we need regulations about Bitcoin ATMs? In this lawsuit, District of Columbia alleges that Athena Bitcoin, one particular Bitcoin ATM network, has excessive fees, and their study indicates that only about 6%, 0, 6% of transactions on these Bitcoin machines are legitimate. I have not read this PDF yet. I downloaded it this morning, but this is very concerning. Michigan has kind of led the way on, you know, and especially Waterford also. They don't have any regulations. Their police department has worked with area businesses and put up some big signs and so on. So, if we haven't, did we ban Bitcoin ATMs, or there was no?
I'll reserve my comments.
Okay.
But I have an update.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I want to start off by addressing the minutes of the last meeting where it talks about public comment. And it says that I expressed my belief that the DDA can control property that is privately owned. What I have said consistently here at the council meetings, the study sessions, is that through our ordinances and zoning and code enforcement, you very definitely can control what is done. And if you have any doubt about that, you only have to see what Southfield Road looked like, the kind of businesses we had up until the turn of the century. This is the Habitat Gallery I've mentioned once. Very expensive, very upmarket art glass. It's gone from Lathrop now. And instead, we have check cashing facilities and a cheap suit store. So, it has gone very downmarket, Southfield Road, and we haven't maintained the architectural heritage either. So, I think it's important to recognize that I didn't express a belief, I expressed what is a fact. I want to mention what I said at the council last night, that demolition by neglect is a fact of life here in South, in Lathrop. And the CERNOs, of course, have led the charge with that. I have documents from the county that show that CERNO is a kiva. The school was trashed, starting with that period. And it's important to see what's happened to the integrity of the City Hall now that we have that mural on the side that has absolutely no place being there if you actually were protecting the architectural heritage. I've made a point of how important that architectural heritage is because property values go up in a community that protects heritage. I'm a member of Preservation Michigan. I can give you all kinds of facts and figures if I had more than three minutes, which I don't. So, my question for you tonight, then, we still have some heritage buildings, that monstrosity that has been created south of the City Hall in what was once one of our really important office buildings. We had lawyers, doctors, business professionals. Now, you can't even recognize the building. Streetscape is trashed. We've got a laundrette. Really classy stuff. So, what is going to do, what are you going to do about remaining heritage office commercial buildings? There is massive neglect, demolition by neglect going on. I have gone down on a Sunday, and I've made a list of all those buildings that were here in the 50s and the 60s and the 70s. And the state of some of those buildings is quite precarious because there doesn't seem to be any attempt at code enforcement. There doesn't seem to be any real understanding of the kind of businesses that you want to attract. Instead, the DDA just says, anything goes, if you can make a dollar, bring in the check cashing. Who cares about Habitat Gallery? And that reflects the kind of neighborhood that you are and the kind of people you're going to attract by your business district. I've mentioned before, friends of mine that have gone through Southfield Road and hadn't been through it recently, refer to Lathrop-Southfield Road now as being trashy. They're used to what it used to look like, the quality businesses that used to be there.
Thank you.
So, I ask basically, what are you going to do about it?
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Old business and tabled items. To my knowledge, we don't have anything tabled, but perhaps I'm wrong?
Not this time.
Okay. I would like to mention, because I think it's prudent to do so at this time, Mr. Tera, when you asked if we had moved on the money services business, the answer to that question is yes. However, there's a separate thing we haven't yet moved on, which is the Bitcoin ATM of it all, so.
So, you separated that?
Yeah, in fact, they always were separated. And so, we had quite significant discussion about Bitcoin ATMs at our last meeting, and I believe it was our decision to resume those discussions at our October meeting. So, certainly, we'll look into the lawsuit you just brought up, and we'll be mindful of that when we have this discussion in October.
We set a public hearing for November.
Yeah, we did set a public hearing for November.
I'll correct. We set the public hearing for November, not October. Thank you.
But the intention is to provide us time to continue deliberate during the October meeting, so then we can have some language that we can present for a public hearing in November.
Thank you, Commissioner Hammond, and thank you, Mr. Tera. Moving on to new business, before I open the public hearing for the solar and battery storage system ordinance, I think it would be right, if not necessary, to hear a brief recap of it, especially considering Commissioners Abraham and Clark have joined us for the first time tonight. So, whether that's you, Austin, or Tom, or Eric, or whomever, I'd appreciate a quick rundown.
I'll do a, I got you. I'll do a quick recap for everyone. So, to introduce Ms. Abraham and Ms. Clark to what we're doing today. Back in, I believe it was May, we introduced a first draft of a solar panel ordinance, solar energy systems. It was a far five-month-long project that we had worked with the University of Michigan's Graham Institute for Renewable Resources. It was a very long document, and over the course of two or three months, we trimmed it down to the document that we have now. The, let me pull up the ordinance, excuse me. So, what it does is it defines all those sorts of solar energy systems that we can allow in the city. It also regulates the ordinance, or the use of solar energy systems. That's the battery systems, that's the panels, that's all the electrical that we can use in the equipment. There was two reasons why we did this. Reason number one was that there are scammers who are out there who are trying to apply pressure to homeowners to get them to use their houses as model houses. My parents actually had one of these scammers come up to their doorstep last month. They are mostly in the northern parts of the Metro Detroit area, but they do target elderly residents. They all view the moon and the stars in the sky, they'll install everything for free, and the only caveat is that you have to present your house at a moment's notice. And by the way, you're also going to be paying stuff in about five years. They never tell you that. But we wanted to add a regulation system that us, the city, can use to prevent scammers so that you have to talk to us, get proper permits before you do any kind of installation. But initially, what this was intended to do was to complete a best practice for something called redevelopment-ready communities certification. This is by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and it is a certification that the City of Lathrop Village did have before the pandemic. We did lose it in about 2021, our certification, and we are trying to reclaim it. This was to fulfill Best Practice 2.6, which is renewable energy efficiency for the city. And this ordinance was just to essentially fulfill that, but now it's also adding in documentation that we can use to regulate its usage. Not to regulate people away from it, but to protect our residents from nefarious scammers, for lack of a better term. So, there was also a question that was posed at the last time that we discussed this, which was back in July. Ms. Robinson, you had posed a question about solar energy panels and emissions. And I did a little bit of research, and I did find a response, so I've prepared a brief presentation responding to this. So, adding more context, a question was posed at the July meeting that was by Ms. Robinson. Going into Las Vegas, there are, there was a solar farm, and there are these emissions coming off of these panels that are out there. Are there any studies to show what, whether those are harmful or dangerous? Yes, there are studies, and this presentation will give you a better idea. So, solar photovoltaic panels, also known as just solar panels, they do not emit carbon dioxide in a conventional sense. However, environmental impacts can arise from land surface changes. These effects include the heat island effect, manufacturing, transporting, and decommissioning related emissions, which is horrifically ironic if you think about it, and then changes in local land albedo, vegetation, or dust resuspension. There's a couple more, but those are the biggest issues that one can face in these solar farms. What you were most likely seeing, because it's not technically emissions, what I think you were seeing was a heat wave or thermal distortion generated by heat island. You usually see these on long, wide roads, parking lots, anywhere that you have no shade, little shade, things like that. According to Damon Turney and Vasily Tanakis with the Brookhaven National Laboratory in New York, urban heat islands exist near metropolitan areas. Solar panels have low reflectivity and convert a large fraction of insulation into heat, which leads to concern that they may affect global or local climate. Nemets investigated the effect on global, yeah, global climate change due to albedo change from widespread installation of solar panels, and found the effect to be small compared to benefits from the accompanying reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. Nemets did not consider local climates or microclimates. Heat islands, to explain it further, like I said, they're usually found in areas with very little shading, but a lot of concrete and metal present. You know, your parking lots, concrete wastelands, things like that. Let's see. It leads, sorry. Covering or shading will lead, lack thereof, will lead to the entire parking lots and the surrounding area to be 2 to 5 degrees Celsius warmer than an open field. That would be about 10 to 15 degrees Fahrenheit on average. It's kind of the same with solar panels. To give you a visual aid, your general vegetation, or even lack thereof, your dirt areas will give off about 2 to 3 degrees Celsius of normal heat without any shade. The heat island effect, seeing above the air, it's probably going to be about 10 to 15 degrees above, but below, you have shading, so you're not going to see that. Further research shows that, referring to ground mount installations, but those are disallowed in our ordinances anyway. We decided against that. So, multiple research sources do suggest and agree that soil under PV arrays do heats up, which can create a local temperature shift. Dr. Lee finds in 2019 that rooftop... Dr. Lee finds in 2019 that rooftop PVs reduce roof temperatures by up to five degrees Celsius, which then reduces indoor cooling demand. And if Mr. Normo here, I'm sure he would agree with that statement. Anthony Dominguez and his crew measured heat flux and roof temperatures under PV-covered and uncovered areas. Roof panels reduced indoor temperatures up to 38 degrees in the summer. So for brief conclusion, what you're seeing isn't carbon dioxide, but rather it's a heat island effect. This can have a negative effect on the soil, but again, we're not putting them on the ground here, so that is a moot point. Rooftop panels will not generate a heat island effect because there's just not enough of them. If they were more closely together and there was about 100 of them very close together, you'd probably get that heat island, heat island effect en masse. But because there usually only going to be two, three, maybe four panels on a roof, you're more than likely not going to get that. And at the end of this, you will find a works cited page. If you want to go and read all of these documents and more, they can be made available to you, anywhere from 80 to 150 pages, just casual reading.
Thank you very much for the follow-up. That's very good information.
Thank you.
It's better to be safe than sorry.
Of course.
For what it's worth, this degree of follow-up is not his first trip to the rodeo. We've been discussing the solar and battery storage system ordinance for several months now, and it seems to be the case that every time we've thrown a question at Tom, he's delivered a deliberate and extensive answer to satisfy those questions each time. So thank you again for putting in all the hard work to compile this and change it and compile it again and change it again and hopefully land at something to which we can all agree. Do you have any other questions about his response?
I do not. And it also helped me understand what I was seeing when I was in Las Vegas.
All right, very good. Then I think it's due time to open the public hearing for solar and battery storage system ordinance. If members of the public would like to speak, again, you'll have three minutes to do so. This time, it must be related to the solar and battery storage system ordinance.
First of all, can you give Tom a raise? And I also want to thank in abstinence, Commissioner Normo for hosting a tangential in-home presentation about solar energy and energy savings. It was very, it was very informative. So I just have some comments about batteries and battery systems because there has developed a, some, some very fuzzy lines between portable battery backup systems and permanently installed whole home battery systems. And when I say portable battery systems, I'm referring to probably the most popular brand you see is Jackery. And these range in capacity. I'm just going to do capacities, not, I'm going to do watt hours, not lots, because they tend to be about the same. They go from 200 watt hours up to 3,600 watt hours, but the 3,600 watt hour system can be twinned to plug in two inlets in your house to power the whole house and expandable up to 20 kilowatt hours and more through add-on units. But these are portable systems, some of them on wheels, some of them you carry around. They use different technologies. Most now are lithium iron phosphate, which is a bit safer, but they're in common use. I have one on a, on my fridge in my kitchen. I have one on a freezer in the basement. And of course, now that concerns me because we're limiting batteries, battery systems in basements. So my suggestion is maybe Tom can do some research and set a dividing line. You know, you know, these backup systems now do real-time switch over, okay? So they can be used just like a computer UPS now. And people have officers in their, offices in their basements, they have computer UPSs. So I understand the fire concern, but you know, what's the, you know, what's the safe dividing line? Thank you.
Any other comment? All right, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing, but we will have time to discuss amongst ourselves.
This one is from a Lathrop Village constituent.
Very good.
Yeah, some questions. Am I able to speak from right here?
Sure.
Okay. So this is from Lillian Kaiser Lowry. She was at the city council meeting yesterday. So she was asking, is there an architect involved in developing the ordinance? How will you determine the best location for the solar panels? Can we get a set of solar panels for the city like there is in Detroit? She mentioned like a solar panel farm that Detroit has. She, she mentioned two of them, one on, um, Youshod Avenue? You could, okay. I'm struggling with the handwriting a little bit. And Greenfield. And I think I took further note on what she was saying real quickly. Actually, I think that's, that's all for, for Lillian.
Thank you. I know you said her name was Lillian. What was her last name?
Kaiser Lowry.
Kaiser Lowry. Any other public comment?
Just real quickly, do I need to go up there?
Yeah, so it ends up on the video.
Yeah. Actually, I, I forgot this. I had some thoughts about the Bermuda triangles. So the two lots that are, the village is trying to get rid of or find a use for. I don't know if they're big enough to do any kind of a solar farm, but you know, it's a thought.
Sure, thank you. Third try. Any other comment? Very good. Having heard none, I'll close the public hearing. Before we seek a motion to approve our solar and battery storage system ordinance, is there any discussion amongst the commission?
Chair Hillman, technically you need a motion on the floor before you can have a discussion.
Okay.
So I would, I would call for a motion. And, and just for clarification, the motion is to recommend approval. So city council has the final say on this, this body. For zoning ordinance, this is a recommending motion.
Sure. Can I have a motion to approve the solar and battery storage system ordinance for council approval?
I make the motion.
I second.
Who said I will?
Commissioner Robinson, seconded by Commissioner Scusell.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Now we got a discussion.
Okay, there we go. Again, first day. Discussion among the commission.
I think Mr. Tara's point is well taken regarding portable battery storage systems versus permanent battery storage systems. The portable battery storage systems tend to be lower powered, so, and made of different materials, so they tend to be lower risk from a fire hazard perspective, and they can be moved to different places, whereas a permanent system in a basement, like that's the only place it's going to be. So I think the, the reasons why we added the ordinance language around where we are going to allow batteries to be installed is appropriate from a fire hazard perspective, but if it restricts people's ability to use portable systems, that portable batteries that are safer, then that is potentially problematic and we should, we should look into whether we should add that to the ordinance.
If I can add some clarity too, the, the ban on batteries in the basement, if I'm not mistaken, is exclusively for battery energy storage systems. So anything for solar batteries is what's not being allowed in the basement. If, there's nothing in here that says that a portable battery can't be in the basement or if it's a battery of other, other method of charging than solar energy. So you can still have a battery in your basement, it just can't be one that charges off of a solar panel.
Okay. So it's kind of a moot point then?
I have a follow-up question for that. Is that reflected in the language and definitions? Because it says that discharging electric, electricity primarily intended to supply electricity to a building or to the electrical grid.
That would be reflected in section 5.20.4 permitted systems. Specifically, section D, battery energy storage systems, parentheses, best.
Ms. Kaiser Lowry, who wrote in, Tom?
Yes.
Was curious to know more about the architects or other expert sources that inspired the language you drafted.
Yes.
Could you perhaps respond a little bit to that?
Again, I would actually be happy to respond to all the questions, so you may have to repeat them for me. But specifically for the architect, I'm not sure exactly who specifically, but there were quite a few people at the U of M who reviewed three different drafts of this and offered advice. If you actually will excuse me, I can get you a name. A Dr. Sarah Mills and Madeline Kroll from the University of Michigan had offered me their first, the first draft, and then Dr. Zona Martin had offered further advice as we moved further along into the process. I do not know whether or not they are doctors in, I know Madeline Kroll and Sarah Mills are doctors specifically in the field of renewable energies, renewable energy sciences. I do not know if Zona Martin is an architect per se, but the U of M Graham Institute wrote the book for Michigan Eagle. They wrote alongside the Michigan State's own school of, of, I think, planning?
Planning, designing, construction.
Yes, planning, design, construction. So we got a lot of our definitions and a lot of the initial advice for the drafting from that document. It was updated again in May of this year. With the first draft that we used, used, I think, 2023's draft, but they updated again this year in May, and that's what gave us the, a lot of what we have now. It's not necessarily architects who drafted this, but it was people who are around this kind of technology on a daily basis. And they, they do know a little bit more than me on, on the matter, so when they, they tell me to jump, I ask how high. But when it comes to figuring out where they're going to be on a building, it will be a contractor or an architect, whoever's going to be doing the installation, they're going to note that to the city on the, what is it? Site plan, thank you, on, on any site plan that they have to get approved.
Ms. Kaiser Lowry also asked a little bit about if this ordinance precludes, encourages, or otherwise considers in any capacity whether or not the city itself might install solar panels on its property across the city.
It can allow it. Actually, one of the, when we started doing the initial drafting of this, that was our hope. In December of 2024, I found a grant that was available for municipalities to apply for that would help us install these kinds of systems onto our own buildings. Unfortunately, that grant will not be renewing for the foreseeable future, so we are out of luck on that. But it does allow residential and commercial, and I don't think we have anything specifically for governmental, but I think we, that would just be a, a quick amendment to the ordinance, unless you have any other thoughts, Mr. Baker?
Well, I have a lot of thoughts, but I mean, one, this obviously, this building designated as historic building, would, any modifications of, such as installing solar panels on the roof would require Historic District Commission approval. Typically, a municipality is not bound by their own ordinances, although always recommended that they do follow them, which is, while we don't have a flashing LED sign out in front despite many people's desire to have one. So yeah, it, it could be, if opportunity presented, there is, there is a pathway to have, to have that done. And to the point that Commissioner Clark brought up about the definition, I do think it, it might be worthwhile to note that, just that point, with your response to have it, also to note that it may be, may be worthwhile to amend that definition to add that these sys, that these systems are permanently installed, which would clear up any confusion about Mr. Tara's point about portable ones, and then also that they're charged from solar panels. I think, I think that's a modification we can make before council considers this for final adoption.
Okay.
If that's something that the commission would like to, as a body, recommend.
Well, do we have any discussion on that point in particular?
I think the clearer, the better. If we're, if it makes, if it makes it more obvious that the, that the ordinance is intended to be applicable to battery storage systems charged from solar panels exclusively and explicitly, then the definition should indicate that. So the question is, how do we mod, what, what's the mechanism? I know what the mechanism, what's the language that we would use to actually modify the definition?
Like you said, I think, you know, Tom's response was that the intent is that, you know, one or more devices assembled together capable of storing and discharging electricity primarily intended to supply electrical, electricity to a building or the, or to the electrical grid and the source of charging being, being solar panels or, or SES systems.
One question. Are we lumping in EV chargers with this?
No, there's actually a separate ordinance for, standards for EV chargers already, that's already, has been approved.
Okay. And the reason I, only reason I raise that point is because if you're charging your, charging stations with solar panels, is that a possibility?
Well, I don't, again, that wouldn't be a, your, your vehicle, which would kind of be the battery storage system, it's not a, it's not a permanent installation in your home, so I think there's, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's a need to address solar, or solar charging of electric vehicles in this ordinance.
Yeah, it's not in your home, but it's on your.
But it can't be moved, right? That's the, that's a vehicle, right? So it's different than a permanently installed battery.
I know there are some, like, I think the Ford trucks, you can plug them and, and power your house off the, off the vehicle. It can, it could be utilized, it's a good point, but I think, again, I think it's key that the definition indicates, is, is indicated that these are permanently installed battery systems, not, not a portable one, not a vehicle that could be used as one.
And one of the reasons we were very specific about the placement of batteries was due to the, the safety component to it. If it were to be for a vehicle, which is not permanent and it be outside your house or would be in your garage, our main concern is having it in the basement where that fire could, which takes, was it 10 times more water?
Yes.
To just, to put out a fire related to a battery, and also it can reignite even days later. So the ability to save a home when it's, the fire is coming from the basement with a ignition source that is, or fuel source that is almost, that is really difficult to put out and, and extinguish, that is the, the main safety factor we're looking at when it comes to. Similar to how we're looking at the solar panels themselves, the main safety feature is if they were to break open, there are some chemicals inside that would be extraordinarily dangerous.
So I have a quick clarifying question with the expertise that you guys have from this ordinance. Does the, the fact that it's permanent is like the biggest concern? So even if it were, if it's mobile, it doesn't pose the same risk or store the same amount of energy? It's just a permanent one since it would be constantly in that space and getting high amounts of, of energy?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything that's, that's on wheels, if it catches fire, you can real quick take it and, and run it down towards, not going to burn anything, but if it's bolted down somewhere, you, you don't really have anything to do, specifically for the batteries. When it comes to the, the solar panels themselves, you really don't want those to move for obvious reasons. So anything that we have to attach to something and bolt something in, you'd, you'd want to, maybe not regulate is the right word, but I guess I'm going to use the word regulate just to, for building standards and safety standards.
A little more history about this conversation that's gone over a number of months is that for a period where you're of months, is that for a period we were discussing having, uh, them be located in a shed, in an accessory structure outside the home, to be even extra cautious, but we found that was a little overly regulated and that there had to be a little bit of a happy medium. So we said that, you know, ideally it would be on a non, or on an exterior wall of the garage would be the ideal location.
Okay.
The truly ideal location would be away from the home, um, but i- if we can get onto, as far away from like a living quarters as possible, if it starts in your garage, you can get out through the back door. You know, uh, things like that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Of course.
Any other discussion? Well, we have a seconded motion on the table, but it sounds like we might want to amend that motion, uh, to alter the definition section. Do we have an amended motion?
Who made the motion?
I believe it was you, Commissioner Scusell. Was it? No? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
I seconded.
Hi, did I make the motion?
Commissioner Robbins.
I have Robbins first and Scusell second.
Right.
Thank you.
Then I'd like to amend my motion to include the...
Uh, how is it this?
Revisions to the definition of battery, battery?
Energy systems are permanently installed and powered via solar power.
Say it again for five minutes, please.
To amend the definition of battery, energy storage systems to re- uh, reflect permanent installation, permanently installed systems and systems charged by a SES or solar electrical system.
Solar energy system.
Solar energy system.
Oh, that's my motion.
Too many acronyms.
Listen, the U of M guys got, got my address, I gotta be careful with that.
I'll second the amended motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Hearing none, our recommendation to council for the solar and battery storage system ordinance passes. Um, agenda item eight, other matters for discussion? I have one, unless anybody else would like to start or have anything else. All right. I wrote mine down, one, because I don't want to get it wrong, and two, because I don't want my tone to come off as wrong. Um, but I've been mulling over some effective uses of this commission's time in the absence of site plans or other things to consider. Um, of my, I don't know, twenty or so planning commission meetings, I think there have been very few where there wasn't a site plan for us to review, but of course, tonight is one of them. Um, so I would hate to not host meetings because we don't have site plans or other pertinent items like this solar panel ordinance to discuss. So I was mulling over various things that might be effective uses of the planning commission's time, and I do think there's one thing, uh, going on in the city that might merit some discussion. So, uh, if it sounds like I'm reading this, that's because I am, to my previous points about wanting to get it right and wanting to get the tone right. The city is currently seeking bids on some vacant triangular lots across the city. On my side of town, if you can imagine where Rita's ISIS, for example, there's a triangular plot kind of overgrown with a lot of green. And I've spent some time thinking about the extent to which the planning commission should be consulted on that process. Of course, land use is our thing, quote unquote, and once that land is sold, our ability to making meaningful recommendations for it is moot. Whereas it's not spelled out in law that planning commissions must review land sales or disposals, I believe, and my research indicates that many other planning professionals in Michigan communities believe that it's very much in the spirit of the law, although it's not defined by the law, but it is in fact in the spirit of the law to consider, uh, the consultation of planning commissions before making those decisions. The Michigan Planning Enabling Act charges us with reviewing public improvements for consistency with the master plan, and by extension, permanent changes to city-owned land should also be viewed through the same lens, in my opinion. I believe it's in the spirit of the law and frankly, of democracy, that our body be asked to review and provide a recommendation before such decisions are finalized. Our role is to ensure consistency with the master plan and to provide a transparent form for residents to weigh in, and I think we should do that. I want to be clear, I don't think council or the city did anything wrong or bad in not considering us as they proceeded, um, with this. I believe it was simply an oversight. But I also know that there is time to work together going forward. So I think we should spend some time at our next meeting discussing if we should make a recommendation to council to do that. Quickly, other communities in Michigan already do this. For example, Big Rapids requires planning commission review before declaring city-owned surplus, I'm sorry, city-owned land surplus. Ann Arbor and Grand Rapids also route certain land dispositions through their planning commissions for recommendation on master plan consistency. Um, with that in mind, I'd like to request that we set aside some time in our next planning commission meeting to discuss this. And I think it would be helpful to hear input from Attorney Baker, Austin, Eric, Tom, whomever else might have some, uh, time to look into this and provide feedback, um, so that we can talk more about the legal framework, best practices, and how we might want to proceed. So I don't want to discuss this now, but I want you to chew on it, um, for our next meeting and perhaps spend some time on it then. A few other bits of general communication from me, uh, before I pass it along to somebody else who might have it. Welcome again to our new commissioners, Commissioner Abraham and Commissioner Clark. I'm thrilled that you're here. I've met Commissioner Clark a few times in the past, and I was very excited to hear that they appointed you. And Ms. Abraham, of course, it's very nice meeting you for the first time. So, welcome to the team, we're happy to have you. One more quick note, uh, yesterday's city council study session, um, I spoke briefly about something I feel like is important to not only the planning commission, but other committees and commission that the cities, um, host. We don't have a universal attendance policy. And frankly, and of course, this doesn't pertain to anybody currently on the commission, over the course of the last few year or so, we've had some pretty truant, um, commissioners. So I think it would be nice if we also use some of our time in upcoming meetings, either reviewing, um, something the city proposes to us and other committees and commissions, uh, by which we could amend our bylaws to give ourselves a little bit more rules and more constraints. So I'd like us to chew on that and think about it for the future as well. That's all I've got. Anybody else?
Just a follow-up to what you were saying, or a point of clarification. Truant to, from this meeting or all city meetings, like council?
There have been truancies for members of this commission that were extensive, multiple months in a row, but also other commissions, the DDA board has been challenged by that, was mentioned by Austin during our study session last night. So, uh, yeah, this is the type of thing where we need to establish a culture of being present and, you know, uh, and, and just, we haven't been doing it because there really haven't been any muddy repercussions, no clearly defined repercussion for missing meetings.
Agreed.
So.
Now, again, does that mean I'm on the planning commission, so I should go to the city council meeting, or I should go to the DDA?
No, no.
Because I, I like to watch it online.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
I watched it last night online.
I don't want to speak for you, but I think what you're getting at is, you know, if, if you've been, if you've applied for and been appointed to a board or commission by the city council, then it's a responsibility you have to be present for those meetings.
Absolutely.
But that doesn't mean that you need to go to every other commission or board or city council anymore.
In fact, I would caution all members of this body of coming together at other meetings because then you run into issues of Open Meetings Act and whether or not the planning commission impromptu meeting was noticed as being, uh, part of another meeting, so.
Great point. Also, I don't know that any of us could lead lives outside of this building if we attended all these various committee and commission meetings, so I'm, of course, speaking specifically about attendance at our own meetings. To clarify, my suggestion to council was piggybacking off of an agenda bullet point that had nothing to do with the planning commission, it related to a different, um, a different body. And so my recommendation last night was for the city to suggest language that all of these various committees and commissions might consider and adopt. Now, I don't know the, the rules or legality or whatever it is behind if city council can just impose this at large across all of the committees and commissions, or if we have to enact those things in and of ourselves. But no matter how you cut it, I would appreciate some guidance from the city about what that, what that language might look like for us to have a starting point for our discussion, so.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. I think, um, when it comes to volunteering for these type of bo- public bodies, I've had the unique experience of, uh, serving on a zoning board of appeals for the city of Ferndale for over seven years, and I've had the unique experience for working for, uh, multiple communities now as the staff representative to, um, multiple, um, public bodies. And there's a lot of time and effort and energy that goes into preparing for these meetings, and also you, um, there's other board members who are expecting you to be there, come prepared and be ready to discuss. And when that isn't lived up to, even after someone had volunteered to take on that role, it can be discouraging, not just for state staff, but also for the fellow board members, and also kind of, uh, can derail the goals and expectations that we all are trying to achieve. So that's, um, that's the main point, and really, I, there's no such thing as perfect attendance for the most part, life interjects, so there's always going to be times where you get pulled away or even, you know, knowing in advance. Commissioner Nordinmo had notified me well in advance that he was not going to be able to attend this meeting, um, a couple of months ago, but there might be a time where you may not be able to attend and only know a few hours before, and that's fine as well. It's just we ask that you, the bylaws require three quarters of the meetings are attended, so we ask that you, um, just are, are able to fulfill those responsibilities, and if not, just give us a heads up and, and let us know.
Very good. Any other matters for discussion?
Uh, I think it would be, uh, nice to have Jerianne and Sharon give us just sixty-second introduction to, let's, uh, learn a little more about you, so.
Okay, that's, that's lovely, I love a good introduction. Hi, everyone, my name is Jerianne Clark. I am, I've been living in Latha Village for nineteen years now, and I am a student, full-time student at the University of Michigan. I'm a double major in political science and Afro-American African studies with a minor in environmental science. This is all a big passion of mine. I previously have experience working for Senator Gary Peters as a legislative intern in Washington DC, and, um, I have a little sister, fourteen years old. She goes to University High School Academy, very, very proud of that, and I'm alumni of University High School Academy, and I'm very happy to be here with you guys. Oh, I'm also in my last year of school, so I'll be finished soon. Yes, a degree will be on my wall.
Thank you for taking on this additional responsibility.
And go Blue.
Yes, go Blue.
I also go Blue.
Yes.
My name is Sharon Abraham, and I've been a resident of Latha Village for thirty-five years, uh, just this past May. I am retired from a career that spanned municipalities, to work in the city of Detroit, to corporate. I worked for IBM and the Bell Companies, and, um, also then the last twenty-plus years were in university. I was, uh, in a director role at both Oakley University and at Eastern Michigan University, from which I retired. I, um, have been very interested always, of course, as a homeowner, um, in the time that I've spent, um, being in my community, um, very supportive of our community, and so this is a time where I had some additional time when I wasn't driving to Rochester or Ypsilanti, and talking to some of my neighbors who've served in other roles, and I thought, okay, this is the time I'd love to, uh, contribute my professional skills to really help, uh, the community that I embrace, um, where I've had some financial gains, staying here for over thirty years is, um, pretty good, so, um, I've had great neighbors, and so I really would like to continue to have my experience be reflected, and so I decided to, let's join this team. Lovely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes. Thank you for that suggestion, Austin, that was nice. Any other matters for discussion?
One out of me.
Sure.
For, for you two, uh, per redevelopment-ready certification standards, we did have to create orientation documents for all of our boards and commissions. I do have two documents ready for you. I can print them out if you so desire, or I can email them to you, so just whatever you want to do, let me know, and I'll have those documents sent to you.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Email's fine.
Email's fine?
Yeah, email's good for me as well.
I'll collect your emails after the meeting, and I'll send them out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
I do, one last item, um, is, uh, there was a point, uh, several years ago where, we're starting to use email more in the planning commission, but the city doesn't provide email accounts to planning commissioners because of the expense. So, uh, you, it was suggested by our previous community and economic development director that each council member, or commissioner, create their own Gmail account or whatever service you'd like specifically for the planning commission, just because it allows you to kind of segregate communications from, from your personal email, um, which is important from an Open Meetings Act and a FOIA perspective, right? You know, if you, if something were to get FOIA'd, you wouldn't necessarily want your personal email to be exposed to FOIA. So it's just a, maybe a best practice, and it's not a requirement, but it's something to consider. It worked well for me before I was on city council and got a city email address, to have like a separate Gmail account just for the planning commission.
Thank you, that's a good recommendation, and I'm not sure that FOIA requesters would want to sift through all of my junk mail anyway, so, might make it easier. Any other, uh, matters for discussion? All right, hearing none, uh, let's move on to general communication. First, Austin, thank you for taking my advice and adding a brief description in the applicant name column. I like that, thank you.
Yeah, we also, um, I think it may have been Lisa's idea to put the facade on it, so also give an idea of the, uh, the building we're, we're discussing and what activity's taking place at it. So we'll begin there at two seven zero 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 Southfield Road, which is Discount Tire at the corn, the northeast corner of, uh, Southfield Road in Eleven Mile. They recently received building permit to remodel and update the sales and office area and add partition walls, new finishes, fixtures, and repaint the exterior of the facade. They, uh, earlier this summer, uh, repaved the parking lot just to the south of us here at two seven three zero zero Southfield Road. There's a Skyler laundromat, lush nails, the vapor shop, and then there's a white box unit. They received planning commission, uh, interpretation to confirm that a laundromat is a permitted use, uh, in February of twenty, uh, February twentieth of twenty twenty-four, allowing the project proceed. And they also received site plan approval. The approved site plan permits retail and personal care use in the remaining units. A nail salon and smoke shop have completed installation. Other signage are finalizing interior buildout. Asset damaging items include the property owner's requirement to construct a barrier wall along the rear of the parcel to separate, uh, it from the adjacent residential district and to obtain a temporary encroachment license from the city council for additional parking spaces installed behind the building. Just so the two, two of you are aware, along Southfield Road, the majority of the, uh, the property, the land between the parking lots and the roadway is owned by Oakland County, so we don't have jurisdiction, Oakland County does, and when you go out tonight, you'll see there are parking spaces to the, um, right along that right-of-way, and all the parking spots along Southfield Road for that property are technically in the right-of-way, so they cannot be counted towards the parking for those units. So, uh, during site plan approval, they asked for the, uh, an encroachment license to be able to put parking in the rear, so they took, we took a two-way alleyway and turned it into a one-way with parking along the back, which was just recently striped. So, um, that's just a kind of a unique feature to remember, that any parking that is in the right-of-way cannot be counted towards the, um, the use that is being proposed in any site plan that is being reviewed. Two six six zero zero Southfield Road, this is south of six nine six, is the flagship store for Holbrook Auto Parts. They revise, um, the revised site plan was approved by planning commission on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Interior and exterior buildout has been completed. The zoning board of appeals granted a variance request to increase the proposed size of the principal wall sign. This took place on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. They did request, uh, to move the monument sign that is in the right-of-way. They did request to move the monument sign that is in the right-of-way, but after discussion with Attorney Baker, we, it was determined that due to a ban on it by, that is a city ordinance, it cannot, a variance cannot be granted or considered due to it being a city ordinance, not a zoning ordinance. Right next door to it, just to the north, at 26710 Southfield Road, Primalite Nutrition, the applicant requested approval for the change of use of a commercial unit located in the mixed-use district, covering the existing personal care use to retail. The approved use is for a pre-made meal business, which prepares meals off-site in a commercial kitchen and sells them at retail location. Planning commission approved the application of its, during its May 20, 2025 meeting, and a permanent wall sign was installed in June of 2025. This applicant is still in the process of opening. They did have an access, a 10% wall or window signage, and after our code enforcement provided a letter to them, it has been removed. They are in the final process of opening. And next door to the north of us at 27700 Southfield Road, the Surnau Group has received approval to have the adaptive reuse of the former high school here in Lathar Village. The project concept was approved by the Lathar Village Historic District Commission on February 19th. On April 19th, the applicant received site plan approval for the historic preservation and adaptive reuse from the planning commission. The approved plan proposes converting the building into multifamily housing, co-working space, and activity event space. City council approved the applicant's payment in lieu of taxes, pilot application for the redevelopment of property on September 15th. The developer is awaiting review of their request for financing from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, and it will be reviewed during Mishda's meeting, which will take place during the first week of October. So we should have an answer relatively soon, as they will be receiving the funding, which would permit the project to proceed. And Chair, that's all I have for the month.
Very good. Any questions for Austin regarding the update report?
And one other thing, the golf simulator business that we approved earlier this year, they just opened up last month, and they were one of the vendors at the music festival this weekend, and we also, working with Jim, we did a short video shoot down there to do a PSA for, to bring more eyes to the business and really give them a welcome, and we'll be working with the Lathar Village Jammer Commerce to do a grand opening shortly, so hopefully before, either in the month or early October, they'll be, they'll have their grand opening, and we'd love to have you all there in attendance.
Awesome. This business, for those of you who are new, was one of the earliest points of discussion for me when I joined the planning commission, and it's really been a pleasure watching that business come to life, and I was excited to see they had fallen off of your update report because that can only mean one thing, that the beginning is near for them. So congratulations to them, and I hope you'll have good experience seeing businesses like theirs kind of come to fruition as well. It's cool to watch. Any questions or discussion? Very good. Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'm so moved, oh.
Go ahead.
You can second it.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, was that?
I moved during the meeting, she seconded.
Got that, clerk?
Yeah.
I know, you can't hear anything.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposition, this meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everybody.